Good evening and welcome to the first School Board Work Session of the 2018-2019 school year. Welcome, everybody. Tonight, the purpose of the School Board Work Session is to build trust and teamwork to exchange information and when applicable to provide direction in order to facilitate efficient and effective decision-making at regular board meetings. There'll be two topics tonight. First, there'll be a presentation regarding Students Connecting Through International Service, and number two, a levy to allow timely option development to address gaps identified by the Enrollment and Capacity Management Advisory Committee, otherwise known as ECMAC. And we are being televised tonight because we have wanted to be very clear, open, and transparent when we're talking about ECMAC regarding what would be happening in the district. That is the reason we're going to be on television tonight. The outcome of tonight's meetings is that board members should be able to provide direction about the Preliminary Fiscal Year 2020 Levy for taxes payable in 2019 to allow for timely option development. And with that, I'll turn it over to Barb Olson.
Thank you, Chair Ostaffi. We'll do a check-in by doing our usual introductions around the table, and I'll ask Patrick to start and go to Patrick's right.
Patrick Smith, Interim Assistant Superintendent.
Brian Sieberson Hall, Executive Director of Community Engagement.
Steve Flist, Assistant Superintendent.
Tim Palmetier, General Counsel.
Linay Shon, World Architects and Engineers.
Patricia Magnussen, Executive Director of Finance and Operations.
Kim Reskrap, Interim Superintendent.
Mike Ostaffi, Board Chair.
Jim Brigad, School Board Member.
Stephanie Fortner, School Board Member.
Dean Henke, School Board Member.
Anthony Parnas, Executive Director of Technology.
Kelly Parpart, Assistant Superintendent.
Laurel Anderson, Executive Director of Human Resources.
And Barb Olson, Director of School Community Relations.
And just for the record, Jessica Craig and Heather Douglas will not be with us tonight due to family health issues, so.
Thank you. At this time, we would like to invite Tammy Epley and her crew of students up to the podium for a special presentation on Students Connecting Through International Service.
Well, thank you very much for letting us come and speak with you today. It's always a privilege, as we've tried to explain to the students, to be able to meet you and have a few minutes with you, so we very much appreciate this. I'm going to go ahead and have the students talk to us about their experience this year with Students Connecting Through International Service.
Good evening. I'm Scott Taylor, Principal of Park Brook Elementary, and I had the privilege of traveling with these students this year. Tanner Long, who represents Elm Creek Elementary, has a football game and was not able to be here, so I am reading for him. So, he wrote, "Hi, I'm Tanner, and I represented Elm Creek last year in an awesome program called Students Connecting Through International Service. All of us led school supply drives in our schools, and then we went on an incredible six-day trip to Arizona to deliver the supplies to the students of Sasebe, Sonora, Mexico. The Mexican children we helped are required to provide their own school supplies to go to school, but they live over 150 miles from the closest Mexican store that sells school supplies. So we made it possible for them to get an education by bringing the stuff they need to them."
Hello, I'm Sophie from Rice Lake. Our program includes six elementary schools in our district: Basswood, Edinbrook, Elm Creek, Oakview, Park Brook, and Rice Lake. Every year, a different principal serves as Tammy's partner, and that principal leads our every other week evening meetings and goes on the trip with us. Last year, it was Park Brook's principal, Scott Taylor, and he was so much fun. There are also several other dedicated volunteers from our community who helped us with our other school supply drives and traveled with us. Thank you, Judy M. Barb. I love how this program connects us to so many wonderful people in our schools and in the community.
Good evening. I'm Mohamed, and I went to Edinbrook. Even before we traveled to Arizona, we learned some Spanish, a lot about Mexican culture and food, and how to lead our school supply drives. I enjoyed setting goals together, learning to work as a team, and getting to make lots of decisions. On our trip, we toured the huge University of Arizona, a cool Mexican-American grocery store, the amazing Carstner Caverns, and the impressive Sonora Desert Museum. We also got to celebrate International Children's Day with our pen pals and some of the Mexican students with piñatas, pictures from all of our schools, and some of the Mexican students with the electric slide dance. After our trip, we created a video of our whole experience and reported it back to all of the students and staff at our schools and at the three of our community sponsor meetings.
Hi, I'm Madison from Oakview. We were really sad that we didn't get to cross the border into Mexico this year because of the travel advisories, but Tammy and Mr. Taylor explained that everyone just wanted to keep us safe, and we still had a fantastic time. I'm so glad we still got to give the backpacks of school supplies at the U.S. border and host the Mexican kids with passports for a fun day in the U.S. too. Tammy also went to Sasebe before the trip and videotaped the school and students there, so we'd know what they're like.
Hello, I'm Ella, and I represented Basswood. I learned so much from participating in Students Connecting Through International Service last year. I learned how lucky I am to live here and not have to worry about whether I'll be able to go to school next year. I learned that our Mexican amigos appreciate everything a lot more than I do, but I'm working on that. I loved seeing their smiles when we gave them their backpacks. It really made me feel so happy to help them, and I learned that I can make a real difference in the world.
Good evening. My name is Erin, and I went to Park Brook. This experience made me want to help others more, especially our friends in Mexico. We may speak different languages, but we all have hearts, and we all need friends. We should be kind to each other and share what we can. Did you see the back of our t-shirts? They say our feet stayed in the U.S., but our hearts still went to Mexico. We attached the foam heart to every backpack of school supplies, too, so that the Mexican kids would know we truly cared about them, even though we didn't get to visit their school.
Well, again, I'm Tammy Epley. It's been my privilege to lead Students Connecting Through International Service for over 16 years. I've been so honored to spend the time that I've been able to with 70 of our district's finest students from across the six schools, their families and principals, including Scott Taylor, Ann Mock, Erin Kruger, Margot Clavon, Beth Nasu, who's with us tonight, Steve Schwartz, and your own Patrick Smith. Some of the others have retired or moved on. I think there's a picture of them before caught up. But they all believed, as I do, that this project gives our student ambassadors an amazing opportunity to learn directly more about the world, to take positive action, and to share everything that they've learned with their schools. At our reunion, which was held the year our first group graduated from high school, we learned the tremendous impact this year-long experience was having on our students. They continued to lead groups and find ways to serve others all the way through middle and high school. They went on to college, and when they looked back at their K-12 experience, they said nothing had impacted them more than this program, which was a big surprise when they said that, but it meant a lot to us. Three years ago, Dr. McGuire, our former superintendent, traveled with us to Arizona and Mexico, and we'd like to extend the same offer to our current superintendents. I know we kind of have two this year. We know it's a very rare opportunity to see our young students put into action all that they've been taught here, especially seeing it outside of our schools. And every year, they represent our schools, state, and country in so many ways that make us very proud. So thank you so much for your continued support of our program. It means a whole lot to the Mexican students that we help and to each new group of Osseo Area Schools students who discover that they do have the confidence, courage, and competence to contribute in a big way to a special community far away. Thank you very much, and I want to introduce Consul Guerrero, I hope I said it right, from the Mexican consulate in St. Paul, who also wanted to say a few words.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Well, my name is Gerardo Guerrero. I'm the Consul of Mexico for Minnesota, North and South Dakota, and also for part of Wisconsin. I really want to thank Osseo District School for having us here today, and I am very delighted and very impressed to know about this program. And one of the missions of this program is to inculcate in these young future leaders to inculcate important values such as determination, flexibility, and resilience. But I would suggest that maybe you should add two more values, and I'm going to try to make a long story very short. I have been working for the Foreign Affairs Ministry for 31 years. I have been a career diplomat for 31 years, and half of those years I have spent in the United States. My first experience with the United States, it was many years ago in Houston, Texas. I spent there two years, and then I was posted in New York City for eight years, and well, now I am here in Minnesota, really enjoying Minnesota. And when I was called for the Foreign Affairs Minister to say, you know, you're going to be the consul in Minnesota, well, I was a little bit choked, because first of all, I had to look in the map where Minnesota was, and then I started looking, because that was in February, so I started looking for the forecast, and I said, well, this is like Siberian. It's not like Minnesota. So I said, yes, I'll go, but I was kind of hesitating about coming here. Well, I said, well, let's see what's going to happen. I arrived in May 2016, and one of the first things that I was really, really impressed in my long story, yeah, in my long story in the United States, is that here I learned the high commitment that Minnesota, its people, and all the authorities has for two very important values, that are inclusion and diversity. And I think that this program includes those kinds of values in these little children. You know that these last two years have been very, very challenging for Mexico, and these are going to be our future leaders, and I think that this kind of initiatives, this kind of programs, help us a lot, because what we really, we have been working really hard, you know, to demonstrate, to show what the Mexican community is here in the United States, the contributions of the Mexican community to the United States. And we have been, Mexico and United States have been friends, not just partners, we have been really friends for many, many, many years. If you know the Southern border, you are going to see that people between two borderlines are, you know, almost like families, and they cross like every day, even for example, to put gasoline or to buy food or things like that. So I think that, as I mentioned before, these are going to be our future leaders, but we need to learn to know each other. We need to learn to understand each other, and I think this is one of the best ways to do it. I think this is the perfect age to teach, to show, to teach a child to understand other cultures and that there are other people in the world, and that we need to live together. We need to collaborate together. So I really want to thank, and I really want to congratulate Osseo District School for this initiative. I really encourage all of you to keep with this very important program, and hopefully more scholar districts in Minnesota will follow your example. So thank you very much for having us here today, and if you allow me a few seconds more of your time, I would like to give a diploma to these young students that went to the Southern border of Mexico. Hopefully, next time they go, they will be able to cross the border. So if you allow me, I'm going to take 10 seconds of your time just to give them a diploma.
Please do, thank you.
So first of all, we have to, Aaron, Piu, Bu, Aaron. And well, we also want to thank Tammy for this initiative, and to Scott Taylor that you joined the group this year, so we also have.
Thank you very much. Do any of the board members have any questions for the consul, for Tammy, for Scott, for any of the students who went on this tremendous trip?
Chair Ostaffi, I just would like to know how were these six schools chosen, or and how can we get more schools to do it, or be involved, I guess?
We have schools on a waiting list who would love to do it. In the beginning, a long, long time ago, I tried to look at schools that would give us a diverse, inclusive group every year, and so we chose schools from across the district. We tried to go with our very smallest school and our largest schools. At largest school, we had a magnet school. We, you know, tried to hit all of the different demographics and characteristics across the district. As our schools have changed a little bit, we also had to change some of the schools that we've had. Sometimes a principal was transferred from one school to another and said, can I keep the program at my new school? And we were able to do that for Scott Taylor. So that's kind of how they've been chosen. What's stopping us from adding more schools is just money. Right now, our financial backing comes from two wonderful rotaries and two great Lions Groups, as well as the District 279 Foundation, and we're kind of topped out right now, being able to afford the flights for these students and their hotel and food and rental car and all that kind of stuff. But if we suddenly came across, you know, a sustainable sponsor that wanted to, you know, continue to help us grow the program, we'd love to do that. As the consul mentioned, there are other schools we know who need this. We have been able to take the school supplies down to the school in Sasebe, Sonora for all these years, but we've been taking more than what they need so that they can share out with two other border schools that have the same problem, you know, where they're required to show they have the school supplies, and yet they live far, far away from stores that sell them. So we've been able to expand a little bit on that end of it. We would love to be able to expand it on this end, too. If you ever come across another sponsor, please let us know.
And then one more question. Do these students have to apply to be, to go?
They do. We have a selection process that we've used from the beginning. In fact, we're in the middle of it right now. My volunteers are going with me now to speak to the fifth graders in each of the six schools. We go in and explain what their role and responsibility would be, and they take information home to their parents. If their parents want them to go through the selection process, they bring back a little parent permission form and receive a whole lot more information. And in that second packet is an essay question. Why are you the best student to represent your school this year? And we give them some hints about things they might want to write about, and then they have a timeframe that they have to bring that essay back with a second parent permission form signed to their teachers. And then each of the principals puts together their own selection committee at their school, a variety of staff in various roles. The principals take the student names off the essays and give them a number instead, and then the people on the selection committee rank the essays. Those are all returned back to the principal. The principals and I meet on the first Friday of October and talk about their top girl and their top boy that they're bringing forward. We never want to end up with just one girl or just one boy, so we always make sure that we've got at least two, and most of the time, we have a three-three split or a four-two split.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chair, I'd just like to say thank you again for all the work that you personally do and that the group and the volunteers do and the kids. I think it really makes a difference, and I can see so much learning going on, and that's just a wonderful opportunity, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions? Again, thank you very much for all the hard work and effort, your hard work and effort, and the students especially, who took on a challenging project, traveled, doing something they've never done before. And again, I want to thank you for doing that and the leaders that helped you along the way, so appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
All right, thanks, Tammy. Yep. And students, I know you probably don't want to stick around for the rest of this meeting, so you are dismissed if you would like to go on and enjoy the evening. Thank you.
Or you can stick around if you want. I need some sleep.
I have homework.
Yeah, it's homework.
So as the students are leaving and Patricia is ready for the next presentation, the next item on our agenda is the topic of the levy to allow for timely option development, led by Patricia Magnussen with guest Linay Shon. So I'll turn it over to Patricia.
I'm trying to find the little guy that makes it into a. It's not up. There it is, okay. All right. All right, thank you, everyone. This portion of the work session tonight is centered around the staff's work this summer to develop options related to school board direction we received last spring after the Enrollment and Capacity Management Advisory Committee brought our recommendations forward. So this presentation that I'm showing up here, it should be in your packets, it's just a way of organizing our thinking, but there's really three main pieces of paper that I want to walk you through that are also in the packet. So our outcome tonight is that board members will provide us direction about Preliminary Fiscal Year 2020 Levy for taxes payable in 2019 to allow for timely option development. This time that we're in, as we set the preliminary levy, is a really important timeframe for us, and we'll talk you through our current thinking tonight about the solutions we're looking at. I want to bring the board back to this framework that we've been working within. Last year, we were along that the dark blue right-hand side for the second year with ECMAC, really studying data, and we brought forward some options, and we've been over on the left-hand side now communicating that and thinking about change management and what those options might look like. And at the same time, staff is still producing data around the center, so that we'll have a new set of data this fall for ECMAC to review again, so we're working all three parts of this model, really for the first time, as we begin to develop some really concrete options. And all that time, we're thinking about those guiding principles, and those guiding principles are really driving one of the reasons we're here tonight. We're trying to look far out into the future and backward map, and one of the things that was really important to the task force that developed this is, in particular, having enough lead time so that our community could react to changes that we might be bringing forward. So we are trying to be very thoughtful about lead time and thinking through the implications of any changes. So you might be familiar with this. We spent a lot of time gathering data. We've been gathering data and looking for its consistency over the last couple of years, and we spent last year really interpreting and making sure we had a shared understanding of what the data's been telling us over time, and we worked very hard not to move on and begin to develop options. We just wanted to surface concerns. So you might recall that back in May, the ECMAC brought forward some observations, and you can see all of those here. There were some observations around elementary schools, and then there were also some observations around our secondary schools, both middle and senior high schools. And these were the recommendations that the superintendent brought forward, and the board agreed and directed staff to develop options to resolve overcapacity conditions at Basswood, Rice Lake, and Garden City, and then at Brooklyn Middle and all three of the senior high schools. And we were also tasked with preparing for anticipated enrollment growth in the area, attendance area served by Fernbrook Elementary School in northwest Maple Grove. So we started a process of looking at how we might resolve those concerns. And as a reminder as well, these are the options available to us. So we've been looking at what will it take to make an attendance area adjustment, and just to remind folks that an attendance area is just the geographic area around the school that pulls in the amount of students to fill capacity in a school. And it should also be noted that options that include attendance area adjustments for one school might impact several other schools, so none of these are simple solutions. The other thing might be to build a new school. And as a reminder, the district does own 35 acres of property in northwest Maple Grove that was purchased in 2008 in case we might need to build a school in the future. It's big enough for an elementary school, not for a senior high school or middle school. Another option is to construct an addition or expansion to a school. So we could add square footage by making a remodeling in the interior of a building and trying to change the configuration of a school, or we might add just capacity by adding on to a building. And again, I want to note that if we would add on to or expand a school, that would need funding in some way, either through a voter-approved bond issue or through some other funding mechanism, and that's part of what we're here tonight to talk about, making sure that option can stay on the table, because if we don't take action now in the preliminary levy, that won't be an option for us in the near term. We could close a school, which would mean that we'd have to reassign the students in that school, and we could do nothing, and that's, we're running out of time to do nothing. There's some urgent capacity concerns that we need to begin to address. And again, also a reminder that there are other administrative actions that we can take that aren't among those actions, like changing the enrollment status of a school and making a school that's open to open enrollment, either in district or out of district, to close that or to move a program. And we made that change for this fall when we moved a connect program out of Basswood Elementary School and moved it to Birch Grove beginning this fall. So those types of things we do on a regular basis. So we had the big old stop sign, and with the board's direction, in the spring, we were able to begin to develop options. So there we are, this summer, spending time developing options. So here's the kinds of things we've been doing. We went back out to site leadership, met with them, making sure that we understood their insight about, do the numbers that we're surfacing make sense to you? Does this ring true to you at the site? And how might you resolve this? What ideas do you have about how we might resolve the issue? We've been verifying data, making sure that our site plans match with what's actually on the ground, verifying that our enrollment trends. It'll be really important for us to get this fall's enrollment data to be sure our patterns are staying in place. So having this thoughtful timeline and a well-structured set of materials will really help us to insert that new enrollment data and be sure we're still on the right track. And one of the most important things we've been doing is assembling the resources we need to start to bring these options forward. One of those sets of resources are industry experts. We've had world architects and engineers. There's other best practices in the industry and technologies that we've needed to get in place as we begin to think about administering those different types of options. We wanted to think about how we might be impacting instruction and what resources might we need so that we don't negatively impact student instruction by some facilities-related plan that we make, and the Division of Leadership, Teaching, and Learning is supporting us in that work so that we're sure that any options support their vision for student achievement and that we don't have a negative unintended impact. And we need to explore how we might finance any of the options, and again, that's one of the things that surfaced for us, that this preliminary levy is an important stopping point for us to continue to keep all of our. point for us to continue to keep all of our options on the table. So, that's what we've been doing this summer. So, going back to the industry expertise, one, I'm going to turn the presentation over to Lanay from WOLD. They introduced us to this model. There's a pared-down version of it on the screen. You have the full version with a lot more narrative in your packet. So, I'll have Lanay talk you through that.
Sure. Thank you, Patricia. Good evening. What you're seeing here in this diagram is a tool to understand the needs and help guide the prioritization for facilities within a district. This is a tool or a conversation that many districts use in regards to understanding everything from physical needs, roofs, flooring, casework, doors, all the way up to having community conversations in regards to how facilities are used. So, a brief overview of what this hierarchy really entails is really starting at the baseline of understanding physical conditions. And the district has done a lot of work within the last couple of years of analysis, understanding those physical conditions. So, on your diagram is listed level one, you've got processes in place for that and funding with the LTFM funding that you're participating in right now. Level two would be capacity versus enrollment. And that's really the ECMAC work that we have been, be able to participate in and understand in regards to the number of students that you're serving and then the actual seats in each building that can be occupied by those students, then understanding the need at that level. Level three is safety and security. Again, looking at how your facilities ensure that safety and security for your students, staff, community members, at, at each building. And again, a lot of work has been done there as well. Level four is curriculum initiatives and delivery. As we've been meeting with the site-based leadership and your administration, there's been discussion in regards to as the facilities are being upgraded or materials are being replaced based on their lifetime cycle, as walls come down, how should they be going back up in regards to, is it like-for-like? Is there a new thought or way of practice or curriculum delivery that can be supported instead of hindered by your facilities? And that's one discussion to be had at level four. And then also, level five and level six are the community use in regards to before-school and after-school programming and other initiatives in regards to community use for your facilities, like your gyms and auditoriums, et cetera. So, this is just a basic tool that has been, and a lens to look at and understand and prioritize your facility's needs within the district.
So, we've been looking at that and thinking about how they all interact. These questions come up when we're looking at LTFM projects, in safety and security might interact and capacity might interact. So, they all work together, but this helped us to organize our thinking a little bit around that. The next thing I want to show you is a timeline. I have a nice giant version of the timeline. I noticed that yours isn't printed on a big version, but I want you to... Yes, there it is. Yep. So, that timeline, that is also in your packet. I want you to see it as five years. What we tried to lay out is how quickly could we, for instance, if we had to build a new school, how long would that take? And we're really out to the fall of 2022. So, that's how we ended up with five years. And we've been looking at this like a five-year, and we've been looking at five-year enrollment projections and looking at five years at a time. So, you'll notice that at the top, it's fiscal year 19, so that the first set of dates is this fall and it goes through fiscal year 2023. So, September of 2022 through June of 2023. The next thing I want you to notice is the box up at the upper right-hand corner to just remind us again, we went through all of the options, that this timeline is just about placing things in a sequence that will help us get to solutions that might include any of these five options. So, just to remind you that those are there. And then I just want you to notice two dates and they're the two that I've highlighted in the PowerPoint. So, if you go up to the upper left-hand corner, it will tell you that the items that are printed in red denote school board actions that are necessary for us to keep construction on the table as one of the options. So, that's why we're here talking to you about the preliminary levy. So, the first date I want you to notice is September of 2018, which is setting the preliminary levy for taxes payable in 2019, and that's funding for fiscal year 2020, 1920. So, those levies get set tonight, or get set next week, the preliminary levy at the regular school board meeting. Normal action that the board takes, but if we want to put any funding in place for some interim construction work, we have to get that included in the levy. And the second date I want you to see is September of 2020. Way down at the bottom where it says "other," that the schools will open implementing some initial options. So, this action in September helps us to ensure that those, some interim construction projects to address our overcapacity conditions could be opened by the fall of 2020. If we wait, we could just think about shifting that down another year. And so, there's some urgency about this if we want to deliver any options that involve expanding the capacity of our schools. So, the other remaining actions that the board would take is tonight, if we set the preliminary levy, I'll talk a little bit more about the financing mechanism that we're talking about, but then the final levy is set in December. And between September and December, the board can reduce that levy. You could even eliminate it in December. We can't increase it though. So, it's really important that we get this in place in September so that we have all of the options available as we continue to study this fall's enrollment and ensure that all of our data is intact. Then, as we continue our work, even past December, we're hoping that by March, we'd be able to come forward with all of our initial options for the board to review. Our thinking is that that March timeline would perhaps be preceded by some community input. We haven't thought through all of the details, but that by the time we get to March, the board would be prepared to set us on a path toward whatever option we're going to move forward with for the fall of 2020. Then, we would begin some design development so that we could get construction bids to the board by January of 2020 so that whatever construction was involved in this potential option would be ready to go by 2020. Now, the big issue is to get from September 2018 to September 2020 is a lot of unknowns. And what we're asking for tonight is to help us keep all of our options on the table so that we can vet them, make sure that the data still holds, have time to get community input and have, have, give the board time to consider all of the options. I also want you to know, and we'll continue to remind you of this, but even if the final levy is set with funding in place in December and between December and March, we decide, the board decides that's not an option we're going to move forward with, we can reverse that levy in the following year.
You can or can't?
You can, yes. So, that, all of that can be reversed in the following year. Levies are very flexible in, in that way. So, putting that in place is not a deal breaker. I have been talking with Ellers and Associates and this is a common mechanism, that boards would put a placeholder in place even past the final levy while they wait for some, for some final work to get a placeholder in place. So, this is not unusual. So, you'll notice that the other two years, as we think through longer-term options, what might be bigger solutions, like the building of an entire building, as we wait to see what happens with enrollment growth, we wanted to get in front of the board with that timeline of September of 2022. And you'll see on the, on each year, there's a row that says election dates. And so, we've just denoted the several election date options. In the second set of dates, the 20, the year fiscal year 2020, you can see we've got a general election date. And then there's several options for potential bond issue dates. So, you can run a voter-approved bond issue on a few dates that are outside of a general election date. However, if the board, I don't want to go down this road tonight, but just to get into your thinking, if the board wanted to renew the operating levy or renew the technology levy, those have to happen on a general election date. So, what we've noted on here is, is the general election date. And then, so for instance, November of 2018, we're not running anything, but if we were, we've got five renewal dates after that if we, if we don't go then. November of 19, four chances are left. So, you kind of see the pattern of information. And we can add to this and build on this over time.
I think it would be helpful to add, like when the tech levy and the other long-term facility maintenance levies are...
Yeah, so the technology levy is on here. So, that's got the same date as the operating levy.
So, is that November of 2019?
So, if you look at November of 2019, do you see on the election dates?
Yep.
Where it says the general is on November 5th?
Yep.
In 2019. So, if we don't go in November, there's four more chances, four more years left.
For those...
Before it expires, yes.
For those levies.
For those two levies, yeah.
Those levies go to 2024, is that it?
Yes, yep.
Both of them?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, they were approved at the same time.
Okay. Yeah, that might...
So, that's how to, to read this.
Ask for all those at the same time.
Yeah, yeah. So, that's, those are some conversations we'll have to engage in about how we'd want to stage that if, if we'd want to.
Okay.
So, then, the mechanism that we're talking about funding is a lease purchase. And so, there's one other sheet of paper.
Can I ask a quick question?
Uh-huh.
Were those, were both of those levies approved on their first try?
I think they were.
No, they weren't.
No.
They were not. The tech levy originally was proposed as a seven-year levy and it failed. And then we came back with a 10-year levy and it passed. The operating levy also barely, barely, barely did not pass the first time and passed by a good margin the second time.
It was a different question.
They asked different questions.
Yes, that is correct.
It was a different question. So, they both took two times to pass?
The second time was a renewal and an add.
Yep.
For the operating levy?
Yeah.
That is correct.
So, it took two, two questions or two, two elections.
Two times with slight variations on the question each time. Well, with variation. So, those levies are included in the preliminary levy like normal. So, we're not asking for anything to change.
Right.
About those, yeah. So, here's where we're at. Sort of the timeline is the board sets the preliminary levy like normal in September. And we'll learn more about this tonight, but we generally set it at maximum so we can work until September 30th with the department to be sure all of our formulas are in place. And then, tax statements go out to our taxpayers around Thanksgiving with that tax impact represented. And then after a public hearing, in December, the school board would set the final levy. And at that time, you can reduce your levy. It cannot be increased at that time unless something happened in, in the intervening November election. We are not on the ballot this year, however. So, here's what we're asking. We'd like to expand lease levy authority so that we can maintain construction of additions as a potential option to provide timely capacity relief to address the gaps that ECMAC identified. And by timely, we mean by the fall of 2020. We can start doing some things that will impact the capacity. We're asking for $15 million and the tax impact for a $250,000 home. Our median home value is about $264,000, but on a $250,000 home, it's $18 a year. So, we asked Ellers and Associates to put this together. You may be familiar with this mechanism. It's a lease purchase with the, the vehicle itself is a certificate of participation. It's just a, a principal and interest payment over 15 years. It's what we used for the major construction portion of the grade span change when we, when we made additions to the high schools. So, it's that similar vehicle. This is a common method used by school districts to do additions. Lease purchase can be used to make classroom additions. It can't be used for, for other things. And for instance, long-term facility maintenance cannot be used to make additions to classrooms. And we absolutely need to continue our investment in LTFM over, over our rolling 10-year plan. This is a mechanism that allows the board to take action in small ways like this to give us capacity to bring forward a construction option. If we don't do this, we won't be able to think about construction as an option. We'll have to think of, we'll have to rely on some of the other options, you know, rely heavily on other options on the table.
Or wait a year.
Or wait a year, which will be an option, which is doing nothing.
Right.
I guess.
This isn't new construction, though.
This is new construction. It's an addition. So, it's not a new building.
Right.
This wouldn't be enough for a new building, yeah. It's, it's just for, to be able to consider some additions, some important...
Yeah.
...additions between now and 2020. And again, I just want to emphasize, we haven't had the time to work through all of the details of what our options might be. We haven't had a chance to use, to do any community input. We'd like to do, get some feedback from the ECMAC group this fall. So, we, we have a lot of work ahead of us, but we wanted to get this in place. We're glad this option is in place and that the board might be willing to consider it so we can continue to keep that option on the table. Do you have any other... Nope, those are all yours.
Okay. Board members, then at this time, we'll open it up for any questions or comments you'd like to share about what you heard.
Well, thank you, Patricia, for putting this together and the team that has, has worked on this. I know, basically, you know, you're asking us for an option, you know, an option to continue the work that the staff has been doing and ECMAC's been doing in order to come to both short-term and long-term solutions. And if we don't do something now, short-term is off the table for a year, pretty much. And I know by visiting schools, the problem is just continuing to grow and grow. So, personally, I don't think waiting a year i- is an option, is a viable solution. So, I would propose that we do support this and move forward by giving us the option now to move the levy up by the amount requested, 15 million. And again, this is just setting it and giving us at least three months for additional information to come in. And at that time, we could say no, completely eliminate it or reduce it. But at least at this point, it gives us a chance for the staff to continue to work with the community and with others, you know, with our site leaders and everyone else to make sure that this, that the plans presented are the best that they can be.
Mr. Chair, I also agree with what you, what you stated. And I did want to point out to members of the public that in the meeting agenda items, there's attachments in section 4B. The second of the two attachments has a more detailed timeline that talks about all of the, in more detail than what was shown on the screen. So, feel free to go ahead and take a look at those online materials for more information. But this is all about keeping our options open and being flexible so that we can respond to the needs in our community. So, thank you.
Although my opinion probably doesn't really matter, I think that, yes, we have to keep our options open and it seems that this is the time we need, I mean, we've heard from multiple parents, we've had schools that have emailed us about the crowding in them. We need to do something now. So, it's important to keep our options open. So, yeah, I would be in support of that.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll, I'll share a historical perspective. One of the questions I always ask myself is how did we find ourselves where we are today? So, what, what decisions did we make over time and now we find ourselves in this situation? And so, roughly 10 years ago, we closed two ele-, two elementary schools, repurposed several others. So, we put, you know, the same number of students into two fewer schools. So, that was one decision we made. And then recently, with our addition of All Day K, we did a grade span change and we pushed another grade of students into the senior highs. So, we also did some additions into those buildings in various fashions to accommodate the changes. And so, now it, I, I, I'm not saying I, I won't support, I'm just challenged that now we find that we've got too many students in the senior highs. And so, whatever we do going forward, to me, the history's important. So, as a board member, I would want to know, how do I know that the decision we make now is going to be a more long-term, sustainable? Because I was hesitant. I don't believe I supported the grade span change at the time, just for some of the reasons that I did. And, and so, I, I know it's not an option to do nothing, but whatever we choose to do, we need to be mindful of, how did we get here? And now, going forward, is it actually going to resolve things, you know, long-term? I'll switch topics to the enrollment piece. I'll switch topics to the enrollment piece. I, I don't know how it would factor in because I don't know how we would gather the data. I live in the Rice Lake attendance area, and at that time, I believe it was when we closed schools and, and we shifted boundaries. I believe Rice Lake Elementary was underutilized, undercapacity, whatever, whatever term we want to use. And so a lot of the old gravel pit area was pointed towards Rice Lake Elementary. Well, that area has grown, you know, quite a bit in 10 years. And so now we find Rice Lake at or over capacity. And the neighborhood that I immediately live in, we're now in that transition period where a lot of the families that have been there for a good number of years are leaving younger families with younger children, and students are moving in. So I don't know how we gather and factor in that data because it's, it's a piece that I didn't hear mentioned by the enrollment, probably because it's really hard to get your, your hands on. You know, like, when are the hinkies going to move? Because we have no children in Rice Lake Elementary attendance area anymore. So that, that's, those are my comments.
I have a couple of pieces of information I can provide. Going back to the two schools that were closed, Orchard Lane and Edgewood, those two very small schools were closed...
And, and Ossio Elementary.
Ossio Elementary, actually. Yes. However, Ossio Elementary is fully utilized for a program, so it's not close to capacity, so it's still using, so it still holds capacity. But the two that were closed and sold are in, we're in Brooklyn Center in Southern Brooklyn Park, and that's really not the area that we're seeing capacity concerns. So I think that that decision still holds, that...
Well, Garden City would be, and I don't want to debate all the, the old history, but you know, it's kind of the, yep, it's, it's, you know, we looked at what is in close proximity, what could we feasibly, you know, close and repurpose on? So we made those decisions.
And I just want to give some context around the, the grade span change as well. So Full Day Kindergarten adds classroom usage, and then we moved sixth graders out of the elementary school, so that provided the classroom space we needed for that. And then we moved ninth graders up to the senior high school. And at that time, we had some funding mechanisms in place that added, made additions to the senior high schools to accommodate grade span change. What it was never intended to accommodate was future growth in Maple Grove. It was not here at the time, but that, those additions weren't meant to take care of any future growth. In fact, we were holding on to that Troy Lane space property to, to accommodate future growth. What happened that you may or may not know is that following grade span change, the growth at our high schools accelerated rapidly. So there was an unexpected increase in students at the high school. The transition between eighth and ninth graders began to grow every year, and the pattern has held. And that's one of the things that ECMAC has been watching. Is that pattern going to hold or not? And it has dutifully held every year. We get a lot more students at ninth grade than we've had at eighth grade. Now, we can't point to one single thing that might have caused that, but our senior highs have grown faster than we had anticipated. And that, this is, some of it's just the ebb and flow. This is what communities do. And Rice Lake, if you read through the, the ECMAC Summary of Progress Report, one of the things we've noticed is that Rice Lake has been turning over. The areas in Rice Lake have turned over. And so what we've been looking at is overcapacity in 2023. So we're trying to anticipate five years from now where the push points might be. And Rice Lake is one of those that we see growing because of turnover. And we try to watch that with housing patterns. So we just watch patterns, and, and it's kind of what happens with the ebb and flow in it. So this is where we're at today. Good news, great enrollment growth, but we've, but we've got to address some of our senior high issues, and now we've got patterns that are changing in enrollment growth, so we're trying to address the issues where they are. Just a little...
And I appreciate that. And, and it's just, even though I'm now newer on this, newer board, it, you know, it's the other years of history. And so for me, it's just, you know, like I said, there were probably some things I, I could say put us where we are today. And so I just want to know going forward, if, if we fix it or resolve it. For me, I'm not overly fond of, I hate to use the word Band-Aids, but it, it feels it needs to be a more sustainable, you know, are we going to get in front of this thing? Because, you know, for our taxpayers, they can look back and they'll say, you know, it, it's, it's little incremental levies, you know, year over year, we do this. It's an incremental piece, incremental piece. And so it just can become very expensive for our taxpayers.
And I think your, your wound analogy is somewhat appropriate. We do have a wound, and it needs to be taken care of before we go into surgery for the long-term fix. And right now, we need to do something in the short term at, at some of the sites. So this is what, you know, this is going to give us, and again, you know, in three months from now, there, there may be nothing on the table, but it's giving us the option right now to get that wound closed before we go on to any further surgery. And, you know, and again, we are looking further down. As Patricia said, we are going to look at increased enrollment. We're going to look at the issues around different programs at the schools and what that may require. So, yeah, I, I think, you know, there, there were some things done in the past that are in the past, but going forward, we do want to look at short-term and long-term solutions, and we are looking at both, and this gives us the option to not be jammed up completely in a long-term solution, so.
Board members, are there other questions you have about what you heard? Okay. We're asking for your direction, so I'm going to read the question that would provide us direction, and I'll go around with what I think I heard. So the question is, are you prepared to support including building lease authority to finance potential building options in the preliminary FY 2020 levy for taxes payable in 2019? And in the order I heard you, I think I heard Mike say you were willing to support. Jim, I think I heard you were willing to support. Stephanie, you were willing to support. Dean, I'm not sure I heard for sure.
Yeah, I, I'm not for sure. And, and so I, for me, I, I mean, I know it, it's early in the process. To me, it feels like I'm going to spend the money before I know what I'm buying, so that's a little bit of the challenge.
Patricia, could you clarify, are we spending money by including this authority in the preliminary levy?
I keep using the analogy, it's like getting our elbows into the elevator door. If we don't keep the elevator doors open, we can't go in, so.
Maybe I should phrase it as, I, I would, I would like better direction on what I'm buying when I'm spending the money, because I don't, I mean, there's a lot of options on here. Obviously, doing nothing i- is not going to work. And I don't necessarily believe at this time, building a new school, which would be on the northwest side of the freeway out by 101.
That wouldn't be in our short-term options, by the way.
Yeah.
So Dean, what this allows us is to have the capacity available. The board would have to approve any eventual certificates of participation. That wouldn't happen until well after March, when we know exactly what we're doing. We'll know more come December, we'll know a lot more around March.
So what I'm understanding from this is that you guys are asking us to approve this on Tuesday so that in November, when taxpayers receive their notice, that, that is a possibility of what their taxes could go up to if this is approved in December. It's not, we're not spending any money, we're just notifying our constituents that this is a possibility of what their taxes could go up to.
And based upon more ECMAC input over the next couple of months, based upon community input over the next couple of months, that would give us better direction come December of what direction to take.
And it can be less, it just can't be more. That's right, yeah.
Be zero.
One more quick question. How did you arrive at 15 million?
Yeah, it's the equivalent of about 15 to 20 classrooms is what it turns out to be. It's, it's an estimation at this time. It was about what we, we were over in one part of our enrollment projections, so that's how we arrived at that.
Does that, does that address then at the senior high?
It's not enough money to address all of the problems that were surfaced, but we can think through what we might want to address in the short, short term, what our most urgent needs are. So we, I don't, I can't give you an answer to what it addresses yet because we have not vetted any of those options with ECMAC or with even the administrative staff. We're still developing them.
And I'm just asking, because I see on here, I mean, several of the schools that the cafeterias are undersized, and so that, for me, that was, was an important part of the day. And so, you know, if, 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 if this is looking at classrooms, then, then it, it's kind of to my earlier question, then how are we addressing the other issues?
It could include something like that, to get to the dollar amount. That's how we estimated a good dollar amount to bring forward.
Okay, thanks.
So board members, because we're looking for direction to staff in terms of what to prepare for next Tuesday's meeting, I heard clearly, yes, from three, that you would support the preparation of materials to include the building lease authority. Dean, I'm hearing...
Yeah, I, I mean, I can, I can support going ahead with, with the levy because there'll be a, a fair amount of work to do to figure out how to resolve what we've got.
So you would be, you're prepared to support including the lease authority, building lease authority? Okay. All right. Does that give you the direction you need for next steps?
Yes, thank you very much.
All right.
Thank you, Patricia.
Then Mike, you were through with that item. You can move to adjourn for the next.
Let me go back, and at this point, technically, we're not adjourning this meeting. I think we're putting it on...
We are adjourning.
Oh, we are adjourning, okay. Okay, so we are going to, do I have a, we're going to adjourn this meeting? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
This portion of the meeting is now adjourned. We will be then working on resetting the room and starting up the second part of the evening in a little bit. Thank you.